She's coming, I hear.
We can do a self-roll.
When you catch your breath, Biddy, would you call the roll?
You bet. Mayor Sean Hyder.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is comments by Mayor. I do have one other thing that's off the agenda. I did want to take this opportunity, we did it two weeks ago, but, Michael, I don't know if you're on, Michael Thomas is out there somewhere. But on behalf of every resident in Lake Forest, I'd like to express our gratitude to the snow removal guys and the team that Michael, he has at Public Works. I mentioned this evening to Bob that in a period of about two hours on Friday, I received three emails from residents commending our team, recognizing how hard they'd worked, how these back-to-back shifts, how courteous they were. We are so fortunate to have your team, Michael. As committed as they are, we know how hard they're working. I mentioned as well, I stopped out Saturday night downtown to take something home for dinner and it looked like it hadn't even snowed on the streets. So, on behalf of every resident, please extend our gratitude to them. We appreciate so much the commitment that they've made to our community and to our residents and tell them to keep up the great work. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, police commendation awards. We have awards for three individual officers tonight, Officer Mark Singer and Dan Marcus, the life-saving award, and Officer Mike Hughes, a department commendation. And to join us tonight is Police Chief, Chief of Police Jim Held and Deputy Chief Carl Waldorf.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is when it's fun, this is when I like talking to you guys, not when you're asking me those hard questions. As you mentioned, we have three awards, Dan Marcus and Mark Singer. Could you come up? Real briefly, I just want to let you know, when we have an awards committee, it's not just, you know, me randomly thinking that this guy did a good job. Their supervisor recommends him to a committee who then meets, reviews the case, and they give their recommendation to me, and I either agree or disagree with it and present the award. These two gentlemen here, this is, this is, it's an award that when you hear it, you'll be kind of, I think, taken aback as to what they did. On the morning of July 28th of 2013, Officers Sangers and Dan Marcus are returning from court in Waukegan. They located a traffic crash at 120 and 41. They quickly checked for injuries and located one driver who was a young woman. She was unconscious and not breathing. They removed the victim from the car, they summoned an ambulance, and they began CPR. They continued CPR between six and eight minutes, which is a long time if you've ever done CPR. The ambulance finally arrived, and by that time, the woman was breathing and she had a pulse. She was turned over the ambulance for transport to the hospital, and by the time the ambulance departed, the victim was conscious. So they no doubt brought her back from being gone. The efforts of Officer Marcus and Singer directly contribute to saving of this woman's life. Their quick thinking and effective action, they're presenting a department life-saving award. This is another award for Officer Marcus, not from our department. Many of you may remember, Dan came to us from Chicago Police Department. So I got a letter in the mail from his former supervisor in Chicago. And the letter kind of scared me because it kind of, it started out with, "You have my condolences." And I first thought, uh-oh, what didn't we find in his background? Then it went on to explain that, "Just kidding, he's a great guy," et cetera, et cetera. So apparently, Chicago's a little behind in handing out awards to their officers. This is a department commendation award for Dan Marcus from Chicago Police Department, Bureau Patrol, Area South, for outstanding achievements requiring performance above and beyond normal expectation and this member's obligation to duty. Mike Hughes, Officer Mike Hughes, stay here, guys. This is department commendation for Officer Mike Hughes. Again, you, when you hear what happened in this case, you realize that we're doing a little more than speeding tickets and parking tickets. Around 2:00 AM on September 8th of 2013, Officer Hughes was patrolling the Middle Fork Farm subdivision due to some recent car burglaries we had in that area. He found and discreetly followed a pickup truck that was driving in the area. It was pulling into driveways with its lights off and then left the subdivision at a high rate of speed. Officer Hughes stopped the vehicle. He located four teens from Indiana, two of whom were hiding in the bed of the truck. A search revealed uncovered drugs and numerous items of property stolen in several recent Lake Forest car burglaries. The suspect eventually confessed to several offenses and were charged with numerous felonies. Without his vigilance, this case would not have been possible. Therefore, Officer Michael Hughes is awarded Department's commendation award.
Thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda is another fun one. Get to swear in two new police officers, Officer Dan Essman and Officer Mark Schumacher. Would you come up, please? Would you raise your right hand, please? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois and will diligently enforce the laws of the State of Illinois and the City of Lake Forest and that I will faithfully execute the duties of a police officer to the best of my knowledge and ability. Congratulations, gentlemen. And that ends comments by Mayor. Next item on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. We'll give the room, a couple of minutes to clear out. In the meantime, I told the chief that starting with the next new recruits, we're going to have them sing their college fight song after they get sworn in. Tell you what, I hope we had no burglaries. We had half the entire department right here.
That probably wasn't the best thing to say, Bob.
Yeah, that's right. We are televised. Yeah, we are televised live, thanks. Delayed broadcast, I think, though. I think I'll ask Lauren and Barry if you could work your way maybe up to the podium. We too have two very special guests with us this evening that are part of, important part of the Lake Forest community and two guests that we've been trying to get here before the City Council for some time. We have been fortunate enough, after we got past the holidays, to have Barry Rogers, the new principal at Lake Forest High School, and Lauren Fagel, who is the new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum for 67 and 115 here this evening, to introduce themselves to you in the community and also give you a brief overview of what's going on at the school. So, Lauren?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Fagel and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Technology and Assessment for Lake Forest School District 67 and 115. And I'm here tonight on behalf of our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Simick. I would like to invite you to participate in our community book read. It's called Beyond the Book, and the book is called The Smartest Kids in the World and How They Got That Way by Amanda Ripley, and I believe you each received a copy this evening. The reason the community book read is titled Beyond the Book is because unlike many books that we find in education, this one is not giving all the answers. It's not about discussing this book and then figuring out how to solve every educational issue known to man. We're really looking at the community conversation around this book as an opportunity for the communicate, for the community to participate in our mission, vision, and goals process. And this is a process that districts undergo every five to seven or eight years. And right now, both school districts are embarking on this really important work that will ultimately lead our K-12 students towards the future. And I'm sure I don't need to tell you how much the future is changing and how quickly it's changing. Mr. Rogers will talk to you in particular about life at the high school and how the pace of change is picking up. But we would love to have you join us by reading the book and coming to one of our two community conversations during the month of February. Our staff members in both districts have been invited to participate in professional development opportunities around the books. And again, the talk about this particular text will go on beyond those particular conversations. We found this book particularly intriguing because it talks about the United States education system in comparison to some other really well-known systems, in particular Finland, which you probably hear a lot about. And it follows four international exchange students who have studied both in the United States and in those countries, and also ties in a lot of the research around assessment. So it's a great read and we hope you'll join us. And here's Mr. Rogers to talk about change at Lake Forest High School.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. So I'm going to tell you, I guess, a little bit about change, but it's really about progress. It's not change for the sake of change, but making sure that Lake Forest High School is a, stays as a state-of-the-art high school. So, a couple of things we're doing in terms of our big initiatives this year. We are ramping up for a 21st century classroom initiative, which is on one-to-one mobile computing, to make sure that our students are using technology, not just for technology's sake, but to create, collaborate, investigate, and use and inquiry. Because we know as they move on to the next level at college and beyond, they're going to want to be leaders and players, and we know those leaders and players are going to need to use technology. The second one is our program to re-envision the school day. And part of that is looking at what our best practice is throughout the country and throughout the world. I think we're positioned here, and one of the reasons I chose this opportunity to come to Lake Forest was I really thought that this school didn't have just an opportunity to be a good school or a great school. I think it was already an excellent school in many ways, but really the best school. We have so many things. We have excellent and committed teachers. We have outstanding students, really committed parents who definitely care. So how are we going to position our school, again, to be the best? The third thing I want to talk about in terms of our initiatives is how are we finding ways to energize instruction? How do, we have a different generation of kids that have a whole different set of previous experience coming to school and exposed lots of different ideas through media and technology. How are we meeting them where they're at, and how are we engaging in energizing instruction? And last but not least, initiative that we continue and really invest our heart and soul in, and that's our emotional wellness piece. And so we're going to continue to work on those. In fact, in many ways, emotional wellness is the plate that all of those other initiatives can sit on. So lots of exciting things going on. On the day-to-day level, I can tell you great things are happening every day at Lake Forest High School, both in the classroom and through the activities that are happening every day. Our students just came through tough finals, very rigorous set of finals, and I think they're very happy. Maybe one or two, too many snow days, as you'll hear them lamenting. You'll hear them lamenting a little bit more come June. But the other thing that you'll see is just great activity. So our student council is doing some great work. I think in terms of leadership, moving beyond the role of just an ordinary student council, some of their roles, a perfect example is this new school day initiative. I think in most schools, the student council leadership really has to do with things like picking the prom theme and doing things like that. But they're really getting involved with school policy and making sure that their fingerprints are all over our school. I would also say that in terms of things that our student council are doing, they're looking at ways that they can actually help all of their students throughout, negotiate that high school experience. So we have an initiative called Student to Student, where they help kind of chaperone the new students in the school and really make them feel welcome. So lots of great things happening. I think I should also give a little mention to our Palms team, which we just heard today won the national championship. So great things happen across in athletics, academics, at Lake Forest. And again, thank you very much for having Lauren and I here tonight. Thank you.
Before you step down, why don't you tell them a little about your background and where you came from?
Sure. If you can't tell, I've been told I have a little bit of a Chicago accent, or a Chicago accent, how you say it. But I'm coming from Northside College Prep High School, which has, over the last 10 years, been the number-one rated school in the State of Illinois. And I'm very proud about the test scores we've had at Northside. In fact, probably more proud of the growth that we've had over the last five or six years, leading also the district and the state in growth in many metrics. So probably what I'm most proud of, and I think what, where me and Mike Simick really hit it off, our superintendent, was just our idea about school. So we think we can get those great scores by just creating the best experiences for students. So when people ask me what I was most proud of, it wasn't the number-one ranking. It was how we got that number-one ranking, just engaging kids at the highest level and having a great experience across the board.
Are there any questions of Barry or Lauren? I think I just have one question with respect to the book. Where do you get the Cliff Notes?
I will say that the book is an easy read. And now, that's one of the wonderful things about the internet, right? You can find a nice synopsis of it, but, yeah, exactly. But I think, as Lauren mentioned, it's a great book read, and I think there'll be some opportunities for people to come together as we go through this mission and vision experience. There's also, I think, maybe a plug on the website where you can actually provide feedback in terms of helping us with our own strategic planning. So please provide that feedback, and it's a great read. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mayor, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob, and welcome to Lauren and Barry very much. Thank you for joining us. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Anyone have any comments this evening? Everyone's worn out from the Super Bowl yesterday. Item number four on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone out in the audience who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration. This evening, there are five. I will read all five and take them together unless any member of the council would like to separate one, and we will do so. Otherwise, we'll ask for a vote on all five at the end. First item, approval of the January 21, 2014 City Council minutes. Item number two, check register. Item number three, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. Item number four, consideration of a resolution encouraging residents to become informed on the independent redistricting amendment. And item number five, City Council approval to waive the bidding process and authorize a provisional salt purchase for the 2013-2014 winner. Any of those items want to be taken separately?
Mr. Mayor, can I just make sure for the record that with respect to item five, it is authorization to purchase 500 tons of salt pursuant to Michael's presentation this evening? And then also give the Chairman of the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee the authority to work with Michael and myself to purchase more if necessary and report back to the City Council.
Okay, Bob. Thank you.
Anything?
Some more.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Is that motion with the second reading on the?
The number three?
Yeah.
Okay.
With, exactly as stated.
What you said, right?
Yeah.
Betty Rolkov, out, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Thank you, Biddy.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances this evening. Consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule for the City of Lake Forest. First reading presented by Alderman Kent Novit, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, and Elizabeth Hobb, Finance Director.
Thank you. We've had opportunity at the recent Public Works meetings to put together at least a recommendation to City Council for an increase in the water rates. And before we get into discussion, I just want to focus a little bit, as is stated on the materials, and just, again, putting forward towards public. We have certain issues that are in front of the community right now. And one issue, obviously, which culminated last summer with the shortage of water that we have in the community was finding programs to reduce usage, to conserve the usage during those peak summer month periods. That's one goal. But a second goal we have is basically funding increased capital needs that we have to maintain the current water system and projects that we've examined and we see on the horizon for the next five years. We are funded right now for the year 2015 capital improvement projects for the water. But looking forward to the years from 2016 and on, we are going to have to find sources for those funds. What we're examining today is a mode to increase the water rate to fund those anticipated costs. Going forward, and at other meetings, we will be addressing ways to, again, incent to reduce usage for citizens. We'll be exploring ways to maybe, again, as Bob would say, the carrot and the stick approach, maybe charging a bit more, but creating systems to maybe conserve water usage through incentives for updating sprinklers that our residents have. And we're going to be looking at those, I believe, on our March 7th meeting. So again, that's on the horizon. But today, what we're looking for is approval to increase the water rates. There's a recommendation from Public Works Committee for, it's sort of a multi-tier system. And it would be increasing the flat rate that we currently have on a 25% basis across board. Also, we'd be proposing to increase a variable rate, as described in the materials, for the high users. And again, when you break this down and actually look at the numbers, those high users are approximately 280 resident households. I just want to break down the discussion, maybe with council right now into a couple of issues. And hopefully, that's not an indication of where we're going with discussion. But the first is, is there a consensus among council to increase the existing water rates to provide for the future capital improvement projects? And in discussions with council members, there seemed to be a consensus that we would move ahead and increase rates. Is there any comment on that issue at this point?
Any comment or questions for Alderman Novit on that matter?
Well, we'll have comments and questions on the ordinance here, right?
Yeah.
Not so much on the ordinance, but are we agreeing as the council to move ahead to increase water rates, maybe through different modes? But that there's a need to increase the water rates to fund the future capital projects?
I have just a comment, I think. And I didn't share it with you when we talked privately, so forgive me because I don't think, I don't think I thought about it. It is that we are funded for this year.
Correct.
And as you look into the out-years, I mean, I recall the time when we used to do three-year planning and five-year planning and how imprecise it can be. Sometimes it's a wish list, sometimes it's a want list. And is there any concern about approving money now for things that are strategic and not necessarily tactical? We've got the tactical covered. And I've already said, you know, that I would, I would probably vote in favor of approving the additional fix to cover our capital. But what is the push to do it right now as opposed to doing it next year when our numbers will likely be more precise? And said another thing, this council did not approve that increase in the property taxes to fund an anticipated, is the word "demunition"? Probably not, but you know what I mean, of the, of the state funding that would likely happen. I mean, this is kind of a likely thing, probably more likely than, meaning the fixed rates are probably more likely to happen than, than the state thing. But is there any reason that we're acting in advance?
Well, the simple part would be, and I think this was proposed to council at our meeting where we did examine our finances going forward, and identified in those projects were numerous replacements, water main projects, and just capital projects to maintain the water plant itself. Common sense tells you, the water plant's getting older. It's not new. Similar to if you have a car that's now beyond five or 10 years old, it's going to get a little more expensive to maintain that car. It's getting more expensive to maintain the water plant. Likewise, for the water main projects, I think in the year 15, we put forth a lower-priced water main project. But the anticipated projects going forward are pretty expensive. I think on the average, they're about $1 million a year on anticipated projects that have to go forward. So again, these aren't wish lists or things we can avoid. If we're going to maintain our system, and this is one of the base items that we have to provide our residents, we have to think forward. We can't wait for things to break down. We can't wait for the water plant to break down to bring this forth. We have to be prudent. And again, we're going to anticipate those costs going up at this point. And again, that was discussed, I believe, in that was the meeting that we had maybe about a month, month and a half ago over at the City Municipal Service Building, again, to examine the projects that were going forward. So there shouldn't be any surprise to the council members at this point. Also, I don't think we're going that far out. These fees would take effect in May of this year. So we're kind of getting ahead of the curve here. When we talked about capital improvement budgets, we didn't throw the water plant in there, did we?
This does include water plant improvements that would be there, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're talking about, we had our special meeting about all our capital improvement needs, roads, you name it. Was the water plant in there, and if so, did we also put the water fees in there? Or did we keep that figure out? Because that would have inflated the capital improvement budget.
The, when we were looking at capital, it did include proposed improvements to the water plant and the water distribution system. However, at that time, we weren't sure what you were going to do with fees. And so the reality is, is that we will scale back capital improvements based on what's available through, ultimately, what you decide in terms of rate increases.
Okay. I mean, we did increase the waste collection fees.
Right.
To do that. And again, we have something where there is a discrete capital structure, like the water plant, and it produces water. There is a certain logic to having the fees that you pay for the water or paid to be connected to the system, pay for the capital improvements for that particular item. We have enough capital projects, like cars and sewers and other things, that we can worry about if we take care of this. So I think we should do it with the fees, absolutely. And I think we should get ahead of the curve sooner rather than later. If we get a little ambitious, which I don't think will prove the case, we can always cut back. But, yeah, I think we absolutely should.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I think it's kind of, in a meeting like tonight, when we talk about having a $2 million reserve on the health insurance, and we're debating a $160,000, $160,000 potential reserve for the water plant, I think, what I'm hearing, I think it gets, it gets a little bit back to reserves. If we, if we pay year by year, eventually, there's going to be a large capital charge. Because eventually, we have to have a $5 million addition, which is different than doing one or three miles of new water mains, which you can, you can adjust. You've got some latitude in. But when you, when you add something to the plant, I think that, kind of what I'm hearing, and I'm not, I don't have, I just want to point this out. I don't know whether the council- wants to be prepared by developing a reserve that reflects the cost that this, if it's $5 million, we're going to build it in five years, do we have, outside of the net present value of money, but do we have to allocate $1 million a year? Are some of the Council members saying that that's what we're, our goal is, to cover the cost completely of water, including the, the future costs? Or when that moment comes, where we have to build the $5 million plant, do we look to bond out? Do we look to increase the rates at that point? I'm, I'm not, I can agree to either concept, as long as the reality of this large capital expenditure is recognized while we do these rate increases. But I just have a question of what the goal is. Because I don't know whether we're covering the cost of, the eventuality of a large capital cost that is incrementally large enough that it can't be divided off or scaled back like miles of pipe, or whether, or whether that's going to, we're going to deal with that when it comes. I don't know the answer to it, I just don't...
I think we're somewhere in the middle. I think we're trying to be a shock absorber, so, so that we anticipate to the best that we're intelligently able to do what's coming up in the future without actually setting aside...
And these rate increases reflect a shock absorber approach? I just want to...
I think they do. There still may be a hiccup or two in the road if there's some catastrophic replacement that comes up that's unforeseen.
Okay. Now, was, the other thing I wanted to say was that, when I was outspoken at the last meeting, I think there's a, and I'm not quite sure what you're, where you're going or not, you asked for incremental questions along the way, but I think this is a good plan. I just want to recognize that avoiding boil orders in the summertime is not being addressed with this rate increase. Because I thought that was a, not that, not that we didn't talk about it or won't eventually, but, but I think this is a good plan. I just think it doesn't address the potential for those four or five peak days. The other peak days, we want to sell water and make money. But those four or five peak days per year, with 500 more sprinkler systems coming on, I just want to make sure that there's a plan to make a plan for those days. Because I think that's a responsibility here. Or did I jump ahead of you?
You are jumping ahead a little bit.
Sorry.
Yeah, truly, we recognize the need to have conservation programs and...
Not conservation, just avoiding, conservation would be like a program where we all use less water. I'm just talking about safety.
Okay.
Not having bad water, like Deerfield did, and like other communities did. Because they didn't have a plan in place to turn the water off.
One goal we have. Last summer, there may have been some other factors that went into it, aside from just high usage. I think, and Mike could correct me on this, we had...
Cold water and...
We had a dilemma, there were certain pumps that were down at a certain point. And had another one broken down, yeah, there would have been an increased danger. Was that volume of water? No, but the repair of the system, which overemphasizes, again, the need to maintain the system.
No, no, it's volume. It's planning, we get a hot day in June, we're producing six or eight million gallons, and we need 14. And we have, I mean, that's where the problem comes, with no pumps broken.
But the pumps being broken last system, that was the, the stress on the system. We have a water borrowing program with neighboring communities, there's ways to at least somewhat address it, but we don't want to have a repeat of last summer, where our equipment is in danger of putting us in a...
But we're not addressing that tonight.
Situation. We're not addressing that tonight. And as stated, that is one of the goals that we recognize that we want to address. But right now, we're recognizing the need that we have to fund these capital programs going ahead. And ideally, we'd like to fund the programs to repair our water system through funds raised through the sale of water. Make it self-funding. It seems to make sense to pay for it from the water usage.
I think we should stick with the agenda that you outlined, and I'm sorry that I asked the first question.
Appreciate it. But I think there's a consensus among Council then to support at least an increase in rate. But then, we get into the question of the flat rate, or how are we going to fund this? And we have different mechanisms to do that. And in discussion with Council members, it seems like the majority, I'm not saying everyone, was in support of increasing the flat rate by a level of at least fif, well, 25%, excuse me, across board. Is there any discussion on not wanting to increase the flat rate, increasing it more? And we'll get to the idea of other modalities that we could use to adjust the rates. But any comments on increasing the flat rate?
Any comments there?
Well, there have to be some. We're given till nine o'clock on this topic. I'm just kidding.
If we increase it 25%, does that put our level greatly disproportionate to other communities around here, what they're doing?
Really not.
Does it bring, I mean, are we up to what they're doing, or should we consider more?
You know, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we use some different language. Talking about a 25% increase is inflammatory. We're talking about $5.
I like that. A $5 increase. So, your 10?
Yeah, right. Thank you, George.
I'll see your 10 and raise it.
It's $5 a quarter right now.
Well, $5 a quarter...
So, it's $20 a year.
For an element, but there is...
For that piece, right. No, but I just want to make sure, I think, I think we have to be careful about the language we use, because there are journalists here who are going to put a headline out there tomorrow, saying water rate's going up 25%. And, you know, that's not the case.
You know, you're absolutely right. When we talk about stuff at the municipal level, it's not like talking about stuff at the federal or state level. You know, even our taxes are quite low. I mean, when you consider the amount you pay and the benefit you get, which stays right here, pretty much, so.
Okay.
We're talking dollars.
And we're also talking only about increasing the fixed rate, a percentage or an amount, not the overall water bill or overall water rates. And so, it really is a very, very small increase in the fixed rate that has been proposed. And I would argue it's too small, you know, in the long term, but it's a step toward making the revenue stream more predictable, and realizing that all of our constituents have access to an infrastructure that they currently don't really contribute to symmetrically. So, I think that, from my perspective philosophically, we need to progressively increase the fixed rate to recognize that those infrastructure costs are there every day, never go away. One of the things that was striking to me was our annual debt service for the water plant currently. And the number is?
Two.
$2.4 million. And we said, well, how about if we just raised the fixed rate to cover the annual debt service? And the number would have been?
Four times.
Yeah. It's like around, what?
$100 a quarter?
Yeah.
Or $80.
Right. So, it gives you the, the sense that what we're doing here is sort of moving in a direction, but it's not really moving very far.
And why wouldn't we move at one stroke to bring it up to what we would like? I mean, I don't think other circumstances are going to change, other than somebody may say, I don't want to live in Lake Forest anymore, because the, the amount I pay just to be hooked up to the water system is too high. If we think it should be $100 a quarter, why not make it $100 a quarter now?
Well, because it's too high.
Well, is it? I mean, you were the one who was, I think, one of the proponents of let's make the infrastructure cost pro-rata.
I have a sense that we're nickel-and-diming some of the folks right now anyhow. And if, if this solves the problem, and gives us the chance to live and, live and fight another day, I'm perfectly fine with it.
I think, Elizabeth, in response to Alderman Palmer's question, I think one of the options that was presented to the Public Works Committee and is in the packet is just increasing the base fee and nothing else. Now, that was just a small amount, but what you'll see, I think, from that, and I think this goes to the heart of Alderman Novak's question, is who's going to pay for the increase? Or how is it going to be distributed amongst the various customers? And so, I think, maybe this chart shows it right here. Is it the, the smaller, low-usage residential customer, again, is just a percentage of 6.2, obviously, but ends up paying a higher proportionate share than the higher users? And so, and I think when the Public Works Committee talked about it, they recognized, yes, they wanted to move that, but not without moving other things as well, so there was some equity for all the customers on this, on the, using the system.
I also think that if one of our, one of our goals is to encourage the higher users to conserve more, that this scenario wouldn't do it. It would not accomplish that, if that's indeed one of our goals.
Also, if they do conserve more, our revenue would drop, and we would have to raise rates. It's a complicated thing.
We don't want them to conserve too much. That's the problem.
But I think, I think we talked about eating this elephant in two bites. And what you were talking about is, is the bite that we would finish it off next year, was what I was, what I mentioned at the last meeting, is we just take it in two, built with canvas, she with the fix.
Alderman, Alderman Novak suggested this?
What's that?
Alderman Novak suggested this?
No, 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 no. And he tried to suggest it for 45 minutes on the phone, but...
But I was paying for the call.
Yes, you were.
But right now, again, on the flat rate, is there much disagreement or agreement that, do we have a consensus to increase the, the flat rate portion? And if so, again, recommendation of Public Works, and truly led by Alderman, tacked on it, was buy that 25% level. There had been some discussion with other Council members that maybe we want to increase it to a higher level. And I just want to kind of fine-tune here, if the Council's in support of the recommendation from Public Works, if we'd like to increase it to a greater amount in the flat rate, less, where are you?
There's a consensus that we want to increase the flat rate, but I really think we're pussyfooting around the issue. I think we need to crank up the flat rate. Forget about talking in percentage terms, like George pointed out, because that makes it sound totally egregious. But we've got the best water in the nation here in Lake Forest, and we're getting it for cheap. We're getting it for so cheap. I'm paying $100 a month for a small, little cottage in Michigan that we use three months out of the year, and I think $70, $75 a month is just the fixed cost when you're not there. And we're charging $20 here?
Yeah, but, for instance, for those guys who are watering the golf course, they'll probably protest that they don't need water, that it's that good, which I'm just teasing on. But, again, the overall rate for water is quite reasonable, and I don't think anyone will debate that $5.14 per 1,000 gallons is a bargain. If you bottled it, I think you could make a fortune doing that.
Well, we should do that in the winter when we have overcapacity, and sell it through Sunset, and Mariani's, and Whole Foods.
As the salt bins empty, we feel.
But as far as the flat rate, there had been suggestion, discussion with George, potentially, if we did that beyond the part that would increase the, charge $5 to maybe $10 per household, which would go a long way to funding our capital projects, would the Council support that? And, again, maybe Elizabeth could show or project what benefits the city.
I'd like to add one other thought to that. One of the things that we have now with the, you know, the simple variable rate, is we have a very unstable revenue stream. And we have fixed costs, like debt service, that don't go up and down with water usage. So, I think it's important, you know, in the business world, we would refer to this as, you know, earnings quality, or quality of revenue stream. We have a low-quality revenue stream that is funding fixed charges that are significantly higher than that, right, than that portion of the revenue stream. So, I think it's important, not necessarily, and I made this comment at the last meeting, not necessarily to, I mean, maybe we do both, but the, the more important thing in my mind is to stabilize the revenue stream, as opposed to increasing it. And stabilizing it means more fixed, and maybe even at the, at the point of reducing the, the usage rate, you know, the, the regular usage rate. One other, one other interesting fact, if you look at the, the character of our customer base, if you will, there are 6,300 meters out there, plus or minus. 6,000 of the 6,300 are in the low-usage category. 95% of the users are in the low-usage category. So, whatever we do is going to disproportionately affect them. It's just a given, it's the way that, it's the way the customer base is set up. And then, we have that other group where they're, you know, the high users, they, I think, should probably pay more. And so, one of the, it's important to look at, I would say, the, the low or zero-impact group, and try to, try to maximize that, but at the same time, get something accomplished. And so, I'm, I'm more in agreement with Alderman Edelman, that I think, I think we could be moving a little bit further in the, in the direction we want to go, a little bit faster, and without, without really, you know, causing undue stress to the customer.
Along, along those lines, one of the things that we talked about was what percentage of water revenues were fixed versus variable. And currently, I think the figure is 13%. And philosophically, identifying a point where we think that percentage ought to be. And the 25% that was attributed to me, was, that's what I was referring to, is that I think the target should be, 25% of our revenue should be of fixed character. And, you know, whether we get there in one step, or in a graduated step over five years as, as a program, just to get people used to the idea that we're changing the program, it doesn't make much difference to me. I kind of like the graduated approach. I think there'll be less resistance to it. We get to the same place in five years, and it allows us to plan for that. And, again, what you said about, what was it, 90% or 95% being in the low-use category, the fact of the matter is, the debt service then applies to the, all those people, you know? And so, it's, it's, you need to have the low-use people taking responsibility for those fixed responsibilities, or fixed costs. And that's, to some extent, what this does.
Well, Elizabeth, you just plugged in higher figures.
Yes.
And so, this would be a 50% increase, just talking percentages, but otherwise, $10 for 20. $10 for 20, $50 for the 100 quarter, and $7.50 for the 500. And it would bring in about $300,000 or more, more a year.
Right.
Which, I, I think that's the way to go. And I don't think that, again, percentages may be high, but dollar amounts aren't. I think even at the lowest, if you're increasing it, what, $10, $10 a quarter, that's not a lot of money.
What, what percentage is fixed as, as a total right now?
Fixed as a total of the revenue as a whole, it's about 13%.
13, so it's really not 50%? It's 50...
Well, of the...
Of the fix, but I mean...
Of the system revenue, the 600,000 that we get, the 640, 640,000 generated now, represents about 13% of the total system revenue.
Right. But if, if water rates were average, we're raising 13, 13% of the bill, 50%?
No, I mean, 13% of the total system revenue generated is generated from the fixed rate.
And that's what we're, that's what we're, and under this current scenario on the screen, so we're talking about raising 15% of the revenue generated or the cumulative water bills by 50%. So, it's, that's 15 of 30, right?
Different customers, it will be different, yes.
Of, of course, but overall...
Right, but overall, yeah.
Elizabeth, if we went to Alderman tax 25%, and we did that over five years, what would be the incremental increase, incremental yearly increase?
Well, to give you an idea, this change takes us from 13 to about 15 and 1/2.
That's all.
That's it.
Okay. So...
So, you get there faster if, what we talked about at Public Works Committee, was that if you take a large...
So, we'd get there, we'd get there in five years.
You could get there in five years at this incremental approach.
Right.
Or taking a larger fixed rate adjustment with a larger drop in the variable rate at the same time. Then, you could move that bar faster by reducing the variable rate, because then you'd be reducing your variable rate revenue at the same time you're increasing your fixed rate revenue.
Let's just suppose we wanted to deal with, with the fixed rate, and we suppose we wanted to do it over five years.
Yes.
At the same rate. Does that get you where you need, where we need to be in your estimation?
If 25% was the target, yes, that would be...
Are you comfortable with the 25% target?
Right.
Elizabeth, let me, I think Alderman Reisenberg's asking a different question. Just in terms of net revenue increase, though, what is the 2% fixed rate adjustment?
Just in terms of net revenue increase, though, what is the two percent fixed rate adjustment a year to get you to twenty-five percent equate to in terms of real dollars? Because you have a shortfall in your, your five-year fund forecast.
Mm-hmm.
And if all you do is raise the fixed rate from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent over a five-year period of time, does that cover your shortfall over the five-year fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there support for that?
I think we're dragging it out too long, to be honest. I think we should go to thirty a quarter this year, forty a quarter next year, and fifty a quarter the next year.
Michael, why sock, why sock the taxpayers with that?
I don't think...
When you can spread it over, when you can spread it over five years? I mean, why don't we increase everything? Double what we, why don't we take the fees up double? So we can raise, you know, more revenue, so we can, so we can find a place to spend it?
Yeah, fifty dollars a quarter for water is two hundred dollars a year for the finest water in this country, plus what you consume that you pay for on a variable rate. I don't think you're squeezing the...
Increasing taxes more than you have to is a bad thing.
But you're reducing the variable rate at the same time, so it doesn't end up being, all you're doing is changing the, the character. Now, you are raising more revenue, but you're raising, you're changing the character, you're moving it from variable to fixed income, or revenue.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch the variable rate at this point?
Actually, we do, one proposal is to reduce it a bit.
I know, which we could, but I mean, if we raise the fixed rate, then we can either keep or lower the variable rate, which for a low user, or a medium user probably, it's a wash at that point.
It's close to a wash.
George, I guess, I guess my angst with that is I don't really understand the variable and all the components of the variable. I clearly understand the fixed, I think. I think I got it right. And I'm perfectly willing to move forward with that right now, but I'd like to take a more thorough look at the variable to make sure that we're considering all of the alternatives. And because we don't have to do it now, I'd prefer to move that into a separate conversation in two thousand, in two thousand and fifteen. Again, that's my point of view.
I actually think that for the lowest users, and there may not be that, that many of them, but I actually think for the lowest users at two hundred dollars a year is going, is going to seem like a lot of money to them. It might not be a lot of money to all of us, but I think for the lowest users, it, it will be, it's gonna be a lot of money to them.
Along, along with the sanitation fee on the water bill.
I mean, they're paying a hundred dollars now, so the increase would be...
I understand.
The fact is...
I, I just...
If, if we went to, if we went to forty, right?
It just seems to me that you're hitting hardest the people that can...
It reflects the true cost of having something.
Yeah.
And otherwise, we're giving them a false value for something.
Subsidizing, yeah.
We're subsidizing them, basically, and, you know, we're not gouging them, we're just saying, this is what it actually costs. In fact, we're not charging them what it costs, we're still fifty percent below that. So yeah, it's higher than they've been paying, but what they've been paying is artificially low. That's not anywhere near the true cost of the system that they're hooked up to. And that's what people should understand, the true cost of the facilities they have.
It's just an observation. I, I think that those lowest users, who are the elderly, the, the people who are the least, it honestly will, I think, make a difference to them, for what it's worth. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just, there's an equitable part of it that, that bugs me a little bit with raising it that much.
Well, I think we can always put in a plan, if we are worried about the elderly, we can put some sort of waivers in there for them, or special compensation. But to use an extreme example, like, well, this poor elderly person who lives in a very small apartment is going to be charged this, where in fact, if you look at most of the low users, they probably aren't in that, in that condition. And it's not unfair to them, it's not so disproportionate. So I would say, let's deal with the group appropriately, and if there's some hardship cases, then we'll cut them out and try to deal with them individually, as opposed to, I think, messing up our whole system by giving an artificial subsidy to what the actual cost of the system is.
And we did have that conversation at Public Works, that exact conversation, and, and that was to be a secondary discussion, once we figured out what we were going to do, is how to set up that program, and what the thresholds would be for them.
Let me see if I can kind of frame this just a little bit, yeah. So it feels like we've got council consensus of some type of a fixed rate increase, right? So I think what I've heard from most of us tonight is, it's either, forgive me, George, but it's either twenty-five percent or fifty percent, okay? And then I've heard, and I think Alderman Reisenber...
Five dollars or ten dollars.
Right, five dollars or ten dollars. Then I've heard Alderman Reisenberg and a couple of others talk about kind of trying to understand the variable component, which I think is kind of the next step.
Exactly.
And, and I think we can do that. What we need to do is, we need to find a baseline tonight, because we've got some timing issues, and some capital planning issues we need to tackle. So I think the question number one is, is it five dollars, or is it ten dollars? Or is it twenty-five dollars, or is it fifty dollars? And I think that's, that's the immediate topic we need to tackle and vote on tonight. I think the, the next step, as you said, Jack, is we look at the variable issues, and Randy mentioned it as well, Public Works digs a little bit more into the variable piece. But I think the piece that we also need to think about, is what David has talked about, is kind of, how do we look at kind of what's really the elephant in the room, which is the, the big use days, and how we, how we handle that circumstance? Do we, do we be think, are we thinking about planning for a, a planned expansion of five million or ten million dollars to accommodate five days, or ten days, or twenty days a year? And if not, how do, how do we handle that? And I, I think that's a bigger question, that certainly merits a lot more debate. And I, you know, that, that's another time, I think.
Yeah, that's another day, and, you know, again, I think at this point, at least personally, for five days of usage, are we going to subsidize a large plant expansion? It's probably not the wisest way to go, conservation's likely...
But you're not suggesting that we would have to boil our water for those five days?
No, I'm not suggesting...
Because I'm not, just, I don't want to, I don't want to be mischaracterized here. Low water, I mean, if we, if we have to boil our water to make it safe one day, a year in Lake Forest, I think we failed the community. To not be able to drink the water for one day a year is an abject failure. Just to qual, I'm not worried about high-peak days, I don't want, I don't want my comments to be mischaracterized, because it's important, I...
As we sit here, no one on council wants the water to, supply to be unsafe. I, I think that's pretty clear, nor will we allow that to happen. Again, we're talking about conservation at this point, and right now, we're talking about funding capital programs. That's another issue that we're going to examine at another date. So again, to enter the discussion on that, it's, it's not where we're going today, we will be going there in March.
Here's one I would suggest. First of all, is there anyone from the public would like to make a comment on this particular item? All right, seeing no one, I'd like to suggest that I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the, the first reading of the ordinance, approving a fee schedule for the city, but I'm going to look for a motion with the percentage or the amount included.
Okay, I'll make the motion, and I'll make it with an increase of fifty percent for fixed.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tag.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, one nay, motion carries.
As Staples would say, that was easy.
Right.
Bob, you want to make a comment?
Only that I'm a little confused right now, because I'm trying to understand what that does with respect to the variable rate. We currently have in place five dollars and fourteen cents across the board. I think you had two recommendations, or two options in your packet, and so I don't, I'm confused as to whether we're taking that now, or we're done. And maybe it's my question, in terms of the conversation.
We can talk about it.
Well, you know, my view, when I just made that motion, was we were putting the fixed part in place, and leaving the variable for further discussion or action.
Which we could do now.
We could do now.
Okay, I'm, I was just trying to catch up to where you were in your conversation, okay?
One element, and second element, now at a variable rate. Again, at Public Works, our recommendation was to increase the variable rate. I believe on the high-end users, and this would be beyond the threshold of the sixty thousand gallons, from the rate that everyone's paying at five fourteen per gallon, and I believe increasing it to five forty per thousand-dollar usage. And again, this would be increasing the cost for high-end users. The numbers are very small, but again, getting towards the element that we are trying to encourage conservation. Again, you could get into the debate, will this encourage it or not, but to bring into the conversation, again, that we're trying to limit that a bit, there is a bit more usage on our water system for those persons who are using that much. And again, it's something that could be addressed, and looked at from a yearly basis, but our feeling was, again, where we're increasing the payments from the smaller households to, again, portion it to the other households somewhat. And again, do we have support for what was proposed by the Public Works Committee? It would seem to me that if we, we do what Public Works has proposed, we will find out within a year whether it's effective in encouraging conversation, uh, conversation, conservation.
Or conversation about conservation.
Have a conversation about that.
Been adjusted accordingly after a year.
So I mean, so I mean, and we can then go back and change it, but I mean, I, I think as Alderman Moore has pointed out, one of the, the trick bags we get into is, we, we increase the fees, and for high usage, and that, that cuts down the usage too much, and so we don't have enough revenue to build the increased plant. I, I would favor, I mean, I'm in favor of doing what you proposed to do, with the caveat, let's look in a year to see how it's worked. I mean, if all of a sudden, we're getting massive revenue, because nobody has cut back at all, well then we know, first of all, it's not effective as a conservation means, and secondly, we know, well, we can probably cut it back, because we don't need that much revenue.
And again, it could be examined on a yearly basis or adjusted. If we've erred, if it's showing no effect, again, you could fine tune it. But again, this was our thought, to at least test it, to see what effect it does have. In all sincerity, and I'll, I'll be quite candid with you, I truly don't believe alone by increasing the rate for the high-volume users, that there will be much conservation. I, I just can't see that making much difference to someone who's using in excess of sixty thousand gallons per payment period. I think it has to be coupled with maybe programs, as was suggested in our meeting, to update sprinkler systems, there has to be some other incentives for conservation.
And I'd just like to make a point about the conservation side of this. This is a bad study, because we're introducing two variables, and then looking at the endpoint, and which variable is it that caused the reduction in usage? And my argument would be, the inelastic side of this equation is the low-end users, excuse me, the elastic side is the low-end user. So we're all, we are significantly increasing their water rates. The only way they can reduce their water bills is to reduce their water usage, and since that's ninety percent of the population, it's highly likely that by increasing the fixed rate, you will actually reduce water consumption significantly, but not by the people you want to, you supposedly want to, the high-end users, but by the lower-end users to whom the price matters. Okay, so I think that when we look at this, if at the end of the year, you say, well, there's a five percent reduction in water usage, my suspicion is it'll be on the low-end guys, not on the high-end guys, and this, what I would argue is minimal price increase per gallon on the high end is only going to be a revenue generation tool, which is okay, because that was the whole point of this in the first place.
I think your point on the low-end users is, they don't have much room not to use water. You know, they don't have big lawns and that, they use it for bathing, for cooking, and therefore, their variable rate will be what it has been. But somebody who waters their lawn five days a week, we'll see, this, this mounts up, and I only need to do it three, and that's, I mean, they have, talk about elastic, inelastic, they've got a lot of elasticity to lower their usage, whereas the low-end people don't. So I think it's a legitimate test, and we can see what the results are. I mean, we can find out, you know, how did this affect the high-end users? Did they cut back? Because they certainly had room to cut back, and...
How can we control for the weather?
Pardon?
I can take care of that.
Can you?
To Alderman Edelman's point, to Alderman Edelman's point, you know, the elasticity and demand for water, there's a lot of it left. We're, we're paying a low price for a valuable commodity, and it's a need, it's not a want. And economically speaking, you know, needs have, are, have a far more elastic demand. I don't think that our water rates are going to affect conservation at all, quite frankly, until they triple entirely, until it, I just don't, our high user, our users pay ten to fifteen thousand dollars for a sprinkler system. I don't...
Well, it will, it will give us higher revenues at that point, which is not a bad thing for our plans.
So is there someone out there willing to make a motion to also grant first reading of the ordinance with the variable rate increase as proposed by Public Works?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tag.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Am I allowed to vote present?
You're allowed to abstain.
Presence is an appropriate voting. Fine, it's going to pass anyhow, aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
We still have twenty-five minutes left.
But there's another element to this that I don't want to let be forgotten, because we're talking about residential users, we have non-residential usage also. And recommended by Public Works was going, and increasing the standard rate, I believe, for non-commercial, because most non-residential users are hitting about the six thou, sixty thousand dollar threshold to increase the rate. And I, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Bob, I believe we were trying to increase the rate for them from five fourteen per thousand gallons to five thirty per thousand gallons. And the primary motivation on this was, with the increases, if we didn't increase this at all, the, what they were paying would be substantially lower than the rest of the users. So we just want to increase at increment, so they're on par with the residential users.
I think, would that not have been included in the motion that we just passed?
That seemed to have been included in the material from the package.
Right.
What, what, what did we do for commercial?
Excuse me?
The five dollars and thirty cents.
From five fourteen to five thirty?
Yeah.
Five, five fourteen.
Variable, yeah.
Five fourteen to five thirty.
Which is probably at three percent, something like that.
Right.
Because the, the up-charge that we just approved for the heavy users was five percent.
Residential users.
They're paying a five percent higher rate. Now I'm switching to percentages, of course.
And they, they would be on the same schedule for the size of their meter regarding the fixed cost.
Yeah, it just brings them up to par.
We don't have any distilleries here, do we? They use a lot of water.
Hospital.
Right. And it's also, that's also first-dollar charge, as opposed to, you know, six, after sixty thousand, so...
I'd like to make a couple other comments on the water. One is, we have to be ever mindful of the fact that our supplier of those microfilters is a one source. And my biggest fear is, one day, that's going to bite us in the rear end, because it's never good when you have one vendor supplying you a critical part like that. So to the extent we err on a conservative side, and generate more revenue than we need to build up a reserve, I don't think that's a bad thing, because I don't want to sit here one day and say, I told you so, but you know it's going to happen.
Yeah, I, I would strongly agree with that.
I agree a hundred percent.
And I've talked to Mike Thomas about this, but the plant can be converted, it's not, it's not the end of the world, but it's pretty expensive.
Yeah. Then the other thing is, is to David Moore's point about, one-day water boil is unacceptable. The largest tool we have in the box is a sprinkling ban, because that's when we run out of water, is in the heat of the summer, when everybody's sprinkling. I don't know how effective and how enforceable a sprinkling ban is, but we have to stay ahead of that power curve, and as we see the water rates are going up, and we're depleting our tank, we're just going to have to...
I had a neighbor's sprinkler hitting the sign, saying, no watering today.
Well, you won't be able to get everybody, but hopefully, the people in this community will be respectful enough of the consequences of not adhering to a sprinkling ban when we impose one.
Have we ever considered, when there is a violation, and the person won't answer the door, of turning off the water entirely to his house?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
We have not reached that point of taking such drastic action. We tend to knock on the door. I will say that unfortunately, sometimes, and we talked about this, I believe, at the Public Works Committee, is that many people will be on vacation, and their sprinkling systems are just automatically set, and so they will get a notice. I think last year, we ended up doing a reverse nine-one-one call, and some people called us in a frantic, saying, I'm out of the country and I can't change it and so forth. So, one of the things that we did talk about at the Public Works Committee, and I think you're going to hear more about at the March seventh committee, the whole meeting, is to try and get better communications with all the sprinkling, the residences that have sprinkling systems, and so that we can reach out and touch them quicker, more efficiently than we have in the past, if we have a problem. I think Alderman Tac also raised the issue that the staff is, is intrigued by and going to research by meeting with some of the sprinkling companies, is to see if we can upgrade, or get the homeowners to upgrade their sprinkling system, because many of them have these systems that are so old, they can't pre-program them on a more sophisticated basis, and so, and they don't have sensors in the ground and so forth. So I think if we're able to accomplish that, even if it's in a small incremental way, I think we will see some real positive impact on the usage.
And there was some discussion, at least during the week, and again, this is something that maybe the city has thought of, maybe it hasn't, and maybe in person it would be tough, but as we license a number of things, possibly we might ask that persons with sprinkling systems pay a license fee per year, another one of those nickel-and-dime fees, but.
Oh, I'd love that one, yeah.
Again, just.
Could we revoke the, could we vote on that right now? Could we revoke the license for repeated violations?
Well, it would be a way that we could communicate with the residents on the days that heavy usage is restricted, and again, it would be a way that we could enforce what we're putting forward if there was some licensing. So, you know, just a thought.
Another option might be to put some of those requirements in our building code, such that when there was a renovation to the house of any significance, you know, there might be opportunities.
They already have backflow checks annually, right?
That's correct.
And there's all sorts of other possibilities. Every time someone sells a house, we, they have to perform a sewer compliance inspection. Well, why can't we also implement perhaps an ordinance where every time you sell your house, you're, if you have a sprinkler system, it has to be inspected, and if it's not a state-of-the-art, high-efficiency sprinkler system, we ask the homeowner to bring that up to code. I mean, there's all sorts of things we can do.
Kent, the, Kent.
Okay, and.
Multi-unit residences are lopped into commercial?
Yeah, that would be non-residential usage.
Okay, so all of those are in the third ward, I'm going to, I'm going to guess. One of the reasons I was uncomfortable with dealing with the variable is because I believe all those are in the third ward, and I don't understand why multi-unit residences are, are being forced to be, be increased along with the commercial, when other tier-one users, they may be equal to other tier-one users.
I don't think that's correct, actually, based on a conversation I had with Elizabeth this afternoon, so would you mind going through the, I think they're in the second tier, not in the third tier?
The concept behind putting multifamily with commercial was that the multifamily units were going to exceed the sixty thousand threshold every quarter by the fact that there were multiple units running through a single meter, and so we didn't want the multifamily accounts to be negatively impacted by the second-tier rate structure, and therefore be negatively impacted by the higher second-tier rate, and so we thought it was better to put them on par with commercial, than put them in the residential category and have them imposed, have the second tier imposed on them every quarter when they couldn't control it.
Elizabeth, I, I understand that.
Okay.
But, but, but when taken in total, I, I guess I understand that's what you said, but really, when taken individually, they could clearly be in tier-one, but yet they're being forced to pay more because they're, they're being lopped into, they're being assessed, okay? They, they pay their, they pay their regular rate, and then they pay, and then, and then their homeowners association has to pay another rate, okay? And then that, of course, is part of that, what they're being assessed for. One of the reasons I, I was uncomfortable with dealing with the variable is I was uncomfortable, quite frankly, with that, because I don't know that it's fair.
Are they being, are the individuals in multifamily residential condos, et cetera, who have a single meter, are they each also being assessed individually in the increased fixed rate or an individual fixed rate, or is that a fixed rate that applies to the meter itself for the whole condo?
Oh, if they have one meter, they only have one fixed rate.
Right.
So they're benefiting by not paying multiple fixed rates.
Right, so that's really addresses the issue.
So I get a water bill at home, and then, of course, I live in a homeowners association, and we get, I, I don't know what our bill is, I, I think it's, I don't know, it's probably seven, eight thousand dollars a year, which is really divided among the, the twenty-six residences. So the fixed gets applied to that?
The multifamily account.
Yes.
Pays a single fixed rate based on its meter size.
So all of these people in the third ward are getting a break?
Well, if you will, there's a single service, it's coming through a single meter.
Then, then I'm sorry, run it up.
You would have voted for.
Then I'm, doggone, what a benefit.
I think we caught a loophole here.
Boy, I, I hope all those third ward people out there are listening.
Well, let's crank up their variable rate.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You guys will be able to examine it next year to fine tune those.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay now.
I want to, I want to take a minute and thank the Public Works Committee for all your good work. It was a lot of work and a lot of time. Elizabeth, thank you as well for the time, and I, I want to just close this, this topic by saying that, to kind of piggyback on what Alderman Moore said, blute or not, as we look out at Lake Michigan, it's hard to imagine, but water is a very scarce resource in our world, and I think we should never forget how we continue to look at conservation efforts, and that should always be at the very top of our priority lists as a community as well, so. Moving on, item seven on the agenda, new business, any new business to come before the council?
Just one more question on water.
Too late.
Yeah, yeah, let's not do the boil.
Item number eight, additional items for council discussion, I need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of the sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy Woodward. The council will now adjourn into executive session.
I might just add, for purpose of the public, that there is no action expected, and so we'll just come out and adjourn the meeting.